It is eight thirty and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would invite any citizens present that want to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. And it doesn't appear like we have anyone present to do that. Next is approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has on it approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of the Human Services Report, and two be noted items. The first one is the membership roster for the Brookings 4-H Promotion and Expansion Committee. And the second one is the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center archery range volunteer list being presented for purposes of workers' comp. Any changes or additions to the consent agenda? Would we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of claims? Do we have any additions to the claims or any other changes?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's start our department head reports with Sonia.
Good morning. I have to be over to Volga this morning, so I requested to be first up. So, I just wanted to give you an update of the things that have been happening for me since beginning of the year at least. I am doing in-school programming at Sioux Valley with their three fourth grade classrooms, and after-school programming at the Boys and Girls Club, both at the club and at the teen center, and have recently begun programming within the Hutterite Colonies, both at the Norfeld School and at the Red Willow Colony School. The Norfeld Colony has one building school with two classrooms divided in K through three and four through eight, and to date have done, been in the four through eight, but am beginning with the K through three class as well. And the Red Willow is a one-room school building with K through eight, and have been in there a couple times already this year. So, I have those things filling up my calendar anyway at this time. We have all of our summer events scheduled. We will be holding our special foods contest in June at the Sioux Valley School. All the other events that we have on our agenda for the summer, other than Achievement Days, will be held at the Brookings County OIC. We have had a couple extension board meetings. We do have a new member this year, Rhonda Stewart-Hauptman, and she's been able to join both the January and March meeting, and we have a meeting scheduled for mid-April to work on our 2019 Extension slash 4-H Budget. Are there any questions for me?
I would just like to say that if you have not been out to see how nice they have made their space at the BCOIC, I would recommend that you go look. They have done an excellent job. It just looks so nice. They're still working on it. It takes a while to get everything all settled, but they've done a really nice job of settling in. It's a homey, comfortable atmosphere when you walk in there. It just feels warm, and that's what I think 4-H should be.
Oh, thank you. We had a 4-H leaders meeting last night, and we are going to host, the leaders actually are going to host, following their leaders meeting in May, so I think it's the fourteenth of May, it's the second Monday of the month, an open house. And I'll allow them to host the open house and give tours of our office and the building itself, while myself and our summer staff assist 4-H families with their online enrollment of livestock for Achievement Days. The state 4-H office and state fair requirements of livestock exhibition has changed somewhat, and prior to this fair season, animals have been entered into the online program, the 4-H online program, by family members, with the exception of market animals, which would be the beef, sheep, swine, and goats, because of the fact that they had a required weigh-in and so that there was no manipulation of initial weigh-in numbers. Well, this year, weigh-in is not required at the county level to participate at the state fair, and so all of those animal entries have been put onto the families as responsible for entering those. So, for some that have only ever shown market animals over the past several years that we've been using this program, they're completely unfamiliar with how to actually put their animals in and upload documents. So, we'll be able to help them with that, and with our copier scanner, we can easily scan any documents they might have that need to be attached and email it to them as a PDF very quickly, so that we can help transition from what maybe the office would have done for them to what is their responsibility. We have a horse training scheduled the end of April, and I'll be doing the same kind of help session for those families at the same time as the youth are going through their required training too. So, we just want to try to make that program as user-friendly for everybody as possible because there are some that enter a large number of animals because they've got several children showing animals, so it gets to be cumbersome for some that don't maybe know how to navigate it quite as easily as others, so.
The other thing I'd like to say is how thrilled I am with her programming at the colonies. I just think that is a wonderful collaboration. Good job.
They're a great audience, they're super respectful, and have been fun to interact with so far, and I look forward to continuing with those teachers and their classrooms in the future.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mike, would you like to go next?
Well, today Irene is out sick. She just got back from vacation, and usually that's what you bring back from vacation is, probably a cold. So, it's just down to me in the office today. Our numbers have been staying pretty consistent. Otherwise, I did attend the county legion meeting last night, and as some of you probably have seen, the state cemetery for the eastern side of the state has been sent to the governor's desk, and we're waiting for him to assign that. Otherwise, things have been going pretty well at our office.
Any questions from the commissioners?
You had any feel on how the governor feels about that cemetery?
The governor has voiced his opinion through the people that have come in to testify and stuff, and the whole thing is it's about 300,000 to maintain the cemetery. They have an endowment that they're opening up, a thing for people to put into, and the governor's office said that they're comfortable with it as long as we're able to get $3 million into it. The first part of it came back, they wanted 90 million, but now they've agreed to 3 million. Have until 2024 to reach that goal, but we're going to go, but the governor, the legislator said we're going to go ahead and get the 600, there's 600,000 that the state has to put up front to begin with, that will be reimbursed back to the state once the cemetery is completed. And the legislature has agreed to put up that money, so we will be able to put the bid in. And the reason for the urgency is that one of the neighboring states within 100 miles of Sioux Falls is already pushing for three different state cemeteries. South Dakota is the only state, only one of five states that does not have a state veteran cemetery, and the city of Sioux Falls has offered the land for free for 40 acres. So, crossing our fingers.
Thank you. Bob, would you like to go next?
Good morning. First thing, I'll go through my report short. February 21st, I attended a tri-state meeting in Worthington, Minnesota that went well. Our severe weather or storm spot or training is going to be April 24th this year, and we'll get a flyer out and send it around to people. It will be Todd Highcamp's last year of doing it, and he's been doing it for 32 years, and he's going to turn it over to younger people, so it should be a good session to attend if you're available April 24th. February 22nd, I attended a South Dakota State University tabletop exercise. Me and Mr. McGrath was observers for it, and it went well. I was on annual vacation February 24th through 28th. On the 26th, I went to Arlington National Cemetery, and we laid a wreath in honor of all South Dakota disabled veterans. March 2nd to the 8th, I attended a NACO legislative conference. Apparently, some commissioners could not make it. I have never flown in the middle of a nor'easter. I've been in Washington DC when hurricanes hit, but I guess I've never flew into a airport when they had a nor'easter going on, and I probably never will again. I would have been better off staying with the commissioners, I think. March 4th and 5th, while I was at the NACO legislative conference, we had a blizzard in Brookings, quite a bit of snow still on the ground, and actions that occurred back here was, we anticipated that the interstate would be closed, so we called all the local hotels to see how many rooms were available, because during interstate closures, what the procedures are is we monitor from Sioux Falls to Watertown, and if they start closing in between there, we've got to get those vehicles off the road, and we've got to make sure that the inhabitants of the vehicles got a safe place to stay. If there's hotel rooms available, then we don't worry about it. They go to a hotel and pay their money and sleep for the night. And if there's basketball tournaments or hockey tournaments and there's no hotel rooms, that's when we have to open the shelters up and get Army Cots out and put them in somewhere to keep them safe. So, that all went well. March 3rd, while I was at the NACO legislative conference, the main key points were the NACO Justice and Public Safety Committee meetings, attended a NACO Veterans and Military Affairs Committee meeting. They had a press conference later in the week up on Capitol Hill. I attended that. That was more on pilt. I don't know how much pilt payments we get here, payment in lieu of taxes for federal lands, but that's apparently a pretty big issue. And then, on March 7th, we had a Homeland Security meeting along with a South Dakota Emergency Management Region Six meeting. I sent Richard over to that. And we also had a PPCC slash POD meeting locally, and I sent Ray Lynn over to that one. March 22nd, we have a zoning meeting coming up, and before I get to my year-end report, the last thing I see, we've got highway bid lettings, and just so the county commission understands, we keep a member of the Highway Department on our Emergency Operations Center of Staff, the ICS Staff. So, not only do we use those bid lettings for day-to-day highway operations, we also anticipate on using those bid lettings for emergencies. We just use his contracts to bleed over into our disaster cleanup. And then, inside your packet, I put a year-end report, and I can see where my budget went for the last year. We had 12 regularly scheduled meetings, and then we had five special meetings, and then five subcommittee meetings. The conditional uses were about the same, variances. Hopefully, with the new zoning ordinance, we'll cut down on some of the variances. And it looks like our building permit fees actually went up. If you look at the historical data for 2016, we ended up with 29 million. This year, we ended up with 35 million, so that's going in the right direction, and hopefully, we can keep going in that direction. It looks like 2015 was our bottoming out of everything. And we'll see, there's talk of like a wind farm being constructed and stuff like that, and if that happens, that would put that number even higher for the upcoming year. I won't read everything else on there. If you have any specific questions, we'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions from the commissioner? Mr. Hill, could you tell us what's going on with the Madera Township issue that we've had a hearing on previously?
I talked to Mr. Gilbertson about it, and right now, we are still waiting for Madera Township. They've been in contact with the conservation people. The big issue is going to be the conservation, the game fishing wildlife or whatever it is, US fishing wildlife, letting them do anything with the property because it's under 99-year leases, and we're still waiting for the township to get back to us with the information. I discussed it with Jake Gilbertson also during the last week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, would you like to be next?
Probably longer to get up here than what I have for you. I don't have much, other than to remind you that Thursday, the 15th, is the deadline to appeal to the local boards if a taxpayer feels aggrieved by their assessment, and they live in the city of Brookings. We have to have written notice by Thursday, close of business. Postmarked on Thursday is considered timely, so if we get something in the mail on Friday or Saturday, then we've got to scramble, because most of the boards will meet on Monday, the 19th, to hear appeals, so that gets pretty tight. But Thursday's the deadline. Right now, we have three appeals in Brookings City and one in Madera Township, and that is it for the year so far. I've got one more that I received last night, and I already touched base with them this morning. It's on a piece of ag land in Oakwood Township that they felt their assessment was too high, and we looked, and they've got a waterway that runs through there, and last year, we adjusted that waterway. We removed eight acres of cropland to the SO or water-rated soil type. I think what happened is, you think you get it fixed, and then we went up 6% this year. And I think they think we forgot about them and broke it, but it's not the case. They've been adjusted. So, I'll reach, touch base with them and see if they want to push through with their appeal, or if they want to pull it, because it's already corrected. If they want to push through, then my recommendation would be to the township board not to adjust. And if they did, then I will see you folks with that one in April, because that's not right. So, that's really all I have, other than the meeting yesterday. Most of the commissioners were there for the township, annual township board meetings, and we gave them their information in packets. I did have a few follow-ups yesterday afternoon from folks from that meeting that came in with questions and things like that, so that's all I really have.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you want to wait, Marty, and do your report? Okay, come on up.
Morning. Just, we'll try, you guys got a big schedule today, so try to be brief on this one. Just, been a tough month for the sheriff's office, and the month of March has been tough on us, and kudos to Dick and his crew on this last storm. It was a miserable, the way the surface was on trying to get that ice off, and I'm sure he'll probably mention that, but it was a tough one. The guys had some bad accidents, a week ago, the accident by Aurora, and a lot of agencies came together and worked good together. We had fire departments and Highway Patrol in my office, and private people, private citizens stopping. It was just a tough ordeal on my staff, and so I've required my staff to do a debriefing, and it'll be tomorrow night, and all first responders will do a debrief tomorrow night to talk about that incident. At times, there are small children involved. It takes a toll on the guy, especially the deputies that have small children and so forth. So, anyway, the other thing, just quickly, the good news is that we're down in inmates right now. We have 24, and that's a manageable crew, and it's 24 people that need to be in jail. And let me get the numbers down. Bart's busy getting his staff cleaning and doing things that we don't normally get to do when we have more inmates. Right now, we have four, four pending inmates, or excuse me, prisoners in other states waiting for transportation. Transportation is a big deal for us. We hired Dave Beitler last year to do courtroom security, and also he does transports. We bought him a new car last year. It's a year old. He has 33,000 miles on it. He averages not quite 2,000 miles of going back and forth between Yankton or Sioux Falls or in-state transports with inmates. It gets too far away. It's almost more cost-efficient to go either with a private transport, or the, South Dakota has a shuttle service that's run out of Rapid City, and Bart's staff usually takes care of those. We have one in Virginia, one in Colorado. The Colorado one is a local citizen, lost $17,000 out of his checking account, was drained out of his checking account. They were able to track it to Colorado and made the arrest in Colorado, and now they're waiting extradition to come to South Dakota. And what's good about this is that we recovered the money. Normally, the money's gone, but we got the $17,000 for this resident, so that's, my staff, my detectives, did a good job on following up. That don't always happen that way, and then I'll let Bart.
One of the nice things with the transports out of state west of us is we have a thing called the Northwest Shuttle. We can even, that even works for some locations, Colorado and California. The way that system works is, the only fees that we have to pay usually anybody coming back from that way is, once they get to Rapid City, then we pay the in-state shuttle service to get them to Sioux Falls, and then we go down to Sioux Falls and pick them up. The Northwest Shuttle is several agencies working together and getting these people moved across from agency to agency back this direction. So, our guy that's in Colorado, the only expenses we'll have out of that whole thing is just from his trip from Rapid City back to here. It works out for all of the agencies, because everybody gets to save money. Otherwise, we would probably be spending $1,500 or more to get the guy back.
So, who pays for that shuttle?
Each agency eats it up. You know, we've done courtesy transports, because you're in it, but we had to pick a guy up over just on the other side into Minnesota, and we took him down to Sioux Falls. That's the only part that we had to do in our help for that. But when you look at, you know, sometimes you have somebody clear out in California you need to bring back. It saves in the long run. It's a really nice system, works out. I went over some transport costs for the first 58 days of this year, and I think that ended on February 27th. We've got a lot of transports already for the year. This focus is mainly just on the miles and the hours associated with the cost. Doesn't include any medical treatments or anything like that. With adults, and these are including warrant, transports, sentences to the penitentiary and court appearances, 6,508 miles, just over $7,300. Juvenile for detention and court appearances, 1276 miles, 1,194. Doctor and dental appointments, those are usually just here in town, 570 miles, $917. Here's a big one, though, mental committals, 3,966 miles for the year so far, and that's not counting anything we've had since the 27th, at $4,689. We're averaging about almost six hours a day in transports. And that would be, I just took, in an average, you know, over those 58 days. So, one of the things hitting us real hard right now is the mental committals. My last count that I had yesterday was 22 committals so far this year. We've, for the last year, we had 47 for the whole year. So, we've almost got that, 50% of that already. Not good.
And the whole purpose of letting you know what's going on, we're going into budget. I'm probably going to be increasing budget in certain lines because of this. You know, how do you budget properly? You don't know what you're going to have, you know, until you have it, you know? So, to let you know that we stay busy, but we get it done. For some reason, Bart's staff does a good job, and we get all these transports and so forth. What's good about that, when he's talking about the shuttle services, that the agreement is that all us agencies that are involved in this, we're willing to go, we don't go far. We go into Minnesota, pick up an inmate, to take him to get onto that shuttle, so that's why it brings down the cost for all of us, if that's... So, that, those types of things does help. But just to let you know that we stay busy, but we seem to get it all done, so. You have any questions?
On the mental health commitments, is anybody tracking how many of the people that we're transporting down to Yankton are there for their three-day hold and then released? Do we know versus anybody that's actually keeping a mental health hold?
We're not tracking that right now.
I don't know that HSC or VAIR will let us know that information because of HIPAA.
We're trying to do a better job of tracking, and we don't have those stats yet of the individuals that don't get transported anywhere either, that seek help, but they're released to family, or their counselor releases them, you know? So, when you look at the transports, those are the only ones that are committed, but there's a lot more that the state's attorney's office or counselors are working with that don't get transported either.
Right.
You know, so it's really the small majority that are going to Yankton, the extreme cases. Otherwise, counseling or other intervention is taking place, and we're trying to organize that with the three law enforcement agencies in town too, the city police, my office, and university police, and then the state's attorney's office also, to kind of help track those, because those numbers are important too.
But on the transportation costs, the people that you're taking down for the three-day hold, right?
Right.
That we're paying that kind of money for.
And it's responsibility for Brookings County to bring them back, too. You know, many times, family does go down, but if they don't have family, then it's our responsibility to bring them back to this county, too. Or if they're in custody, of course, then we have to go back and get them, too. Responsibility to transport and to bring them back to this county, so we absorb all that in our budget. Any other questions? But we're down in numbers at the jail, so if there's any little light at the tunnel, it's not all gloom and doom.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Bart.
Dick? And I probably should have asked, we've got three minutes till we've got a scheduled
Okay.
matter. We might interrupt and come back.
I'll maybe have to come back if I trigger some questions, but maybe the easiest thing to do, I submitted a written report for you to review, and I kind of just summarized briefly different topics that I've been dealing with, in hopes that it would trigger questions, instead of explaining the whole situation in writing. However, since that time, there's been a couple things, and I'll touch on them, and then we'll take our nine o'clock break or whatever.
nine o'clock break or whatever. Also, yesterday, the city administrator, Jamison, with the city of Volga, would like to let us know that the Samara Avenue project is still hoping to move forward. They're interested in knowing what exactly the county might be interested in doing as far as contributing to that in one shape or another. And I just told him that I was meeting with you today and I would bring it up. And if there's any information you want me to share back to him on that. I appreciated him getting ahead, excuse, ahold of me before the budget process. And like Marty said, I've got quite a few things on here, too, also, that will be affected by budget. But, and then another thing we've been working on, Linda and I have been visiting with Brenda on this paper trail or tracking of expenses and bills that have been paid for these big grant projects. It's a complicated process and we're trying to develop spreadsheets that we can follow the invoice number, not only from the state, but also as we enter it into our system so that it's easy to refer back when they, they bring up questions or we have further items. And then also, once a project is 90% complete, then we can go through the process with Vicki and get it on our fixed assets and upgrade that system also. But as you're aware of, the state billing procedures are a little bit slow at times and it's gotten slower with, with the turnover of help out there. So we're doing our best to, to keep track of everything and also the, obviously, the funds that we're contributing out of our own budget. Another thing, seasonal wait restrictions will be coming up on Monday, March 26th. I've also got a bid opening this morning at 10:00 AM for some bridge decking. This is a new system that, that I've been working with Banner on, is coming up with maybe a quick replacement decking that we'll be able to use. But until we open the bids, I don't know if it's going to be a viable alternative, but it'll certainly be a, a good thing to, to pursue. Am I done?
You're good.
Okay. I can come back.
You want to come back? Okay. That'd be fine. Thank you. Sheriff, you're up next for your regularly scheduled, specially scheduled, I should say, issue.
Thank you. Just, of course, with the recent, the recent shooting in Florida has stirred a lot of, a lot of concerns for schools. And hopefully that we don't have something like that in, in, in Brookings County, but we need to, we need to be prepared for that. And some of this is kind of some information for the commissioners also. So if you get asked what your sheriff's department is doing to, to help keep the school safe in the county, you'll have a little idea of what's going on, too. And then I also have a proposal. I have one deputy that's trained in Alice training. And what this training is, is that he can go into businesses or schools or whatever, talk about how, with lockdowns, how to keep safe, what they should do and, and those types of things. I'm getting the second deputy trained for that because of just making sure that we get all the schools covered. Also, there is a highway patrolman in, in our district that's trained with Alice and also a city policeman. So we all, agencies work together. And it's good training. It's similar to the training that, for the individual that came from Sioux City, the officer from Sioux City that came to talk about what you should be prepared for if you have a school, a school shooting. So trying to figure out, okay, how can I keep the schools in, in Brookings County with more of a police presence? And at the particular time right now, I'm requiring all the deputies to spend on their patrol shifts, is that they're assigned to stop at each school for a little while and just make a presence known. I went to patrol car out front to let people know there's a police car there. Go in and just, just see if there's anything they can help do or, or whatever. And that's, but it's tough to do because I only have, a lot of times, I only have one deputy working a shift. Now, Brookings has, I have a school resource officer, officer that is also my patrol sergeant and he teaches there also in the schools. I did, we did train a second deputy to teach there and, and he's, he's doing one school and Sergeant Pike's doing two other schools. But it still makes it tough for the, for the Sergeant Pike because he's also required to take, take care of a patrol shift also. Now, Brookings has two school resource officers. The city pays for one, the school district pays for the second. So what I have done is that I've contacted all three schools and I've talked into three superintendents, or excuse me, two superintendents out of the three. Talked to the Elkton superintendent and the White superintendent, but I haven't talked into the superintendent in Volga yet. We just haven't connected. She knows what, what I'm asking. But in Volga, I have talked to the, the high school principal and then one of the school board members. And in essence, what, what I'm looking for, or looking to do, is that to see if there would be willing to come up with money out of their school district to help fund an extra deputy. And all three school districts are willing to do that, but it's all about money. You know, they have to go to their superintendents, or excuse me, to their school boards and try to find that money. When I talked to the school superintendent in Elkton, they had just came from a meeting from Flandre, which Flandre had, Flandre School District just put in $60,000 so that they could have an officer in the school in Flandre. And of course, with the luxury in, in, in the county is that I can't provide a deputy full-time in each school. He'd have to be, spend so much time in each school each day. And the Elkton says, you know, I can't afford $60,000, but I know I can, I know I can come up with 20,000 or I know 20,000. And that was just his quick response, but yet he has to go to his school board, too, and that. So my proposal is, and, and I'm ahead of myself talking to the schools because I have to get somewhat of a consensus or permission from the board because it's going to be some money on our side, too, is that it'd be a 75-25 split. In other words, the three school districts would pay for 75% of a deputy and Brookings County would pay for the other 25%, 5%. Now, and again, that's, that's if everybody can come up with that type of money. Now, I have two part-time deputies. In last year, one deputy worked up till October and he resigned and his wages at that point were 18,220. Don McCray, who is a part-time deputy that comes in and works weekends, serves papers and, and helps out on patrol, is, last year, he made 24,057. My intention is, is at some point, I'll bring up, because it's budget time and then this will have to be taken care of in budget, is that I figure that with Stotenberg, I didn't replace that part-time deputy. So that'll help pay for the one that you gave me the first of the year. We, you allowed me to add one patrol deputy. And that's helping pay for his, for his salary. Now, with McCray, our, our take would, on the 75-25 would be, $18,000 would be the county's share. And I figured with McCray, I wouldn't replace that. I would, basically, I would not replace the two part-time deputies to help counter that full-time deputy. And when school's not in session, then he'd be assigned to patrol. And of course, in the summertime, he'd be assigned to patrol. What this deputy would be responsible for is that he'd have to spend so much time in each school each day, but that'd be his sole responsibility. He would not answer calls where now if a deputy goes to a school and if something else going on, he has to leave that school. He may be given a presentation. John Pike has been called out of presentations to go answer a call because he's the only deputy working. That wouldn't happen. Also, each school has, has active shooter plans and those types of things that always have to be updated and things. That would be the responsibility of this deputy, to, to work with the schools, to work within service with the teachers. And he would be somewhat at the mercy of those three schools. But that would be his sole responsibility would be those, would be those schools. It's not a perfect scenario because he'd only be spending, going to three school districts, two hours a day in each, in each school. But if school A needed him to do some presentations, he may spend more time in that school that day. And, and I would have to have a field deputy maybe go into another school just, just to cover a little bit. But those are things we can work out once if, if this is a go. So I guess what I'm looking for from the commission is just, you're okay, or consensus to go ahead and, and explore this. Because if, if you say, no, this is not what we want to do, then I, I need to quit talking to the school districts and, and, and trying to get money from them if you guys don't think this is a feasible deal. And so that's why I'm coming to that. I think I can make it work, not replacing the part-time deputies to cover that 18,000 that would be our share to come up with. Of course, I got a contract that the, and probably Steve probably helped write the contract with the city resource officer with the memorandum of understanding and so forth. And it talks about responsibilities. What's the county's responsibility? It's my employee. We talk about, there'll be annual increases, you know, due to wage increases and those types of things. But those are all things that are worked out in the later down. So that's kind of where I'm at, if that, if I've explained my well, explained myself well enough. So that's kind of where I'm at. So here, I talk about doom and I probably step on my own. I talk about doom and gloom in one and then I'm asking for more money on the other end. So.
Commissioner Miller?
My opinion is that this is something we have to do. I just, I, I don't think, I don't think we can keep our schools safe enough. And this is a, this is a small thing that we can do to try to help them protect our students and our future, if you will. And, you know, everybody thinks it won't happen here, but I bet you those schools that have had it happen thought the same thing. So in my opinion, you know, you're sneaky, Marty, because you always can figure out how to make that really look good for us. You always do. And, and so I just, I feel like it's something that we, we really need to do. We really need to look hard at this.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. It appears that you've tried to make it pretty much revenue neutral. So I certainly encourage you to go through the rest of the process and figure out where you're at with everybody else, what the contracts look like and present us with a program at budget time that makes sense. You're halfway there already. So I would encourage you to continue because obviously, public school safety is, is something we're all interested in. So I think you're already halfway there. I would encourage you to continue.
I'm a big fan of collaboration and it seems like you're putting together a collaboration with the school districts in there to, to fund the need and stuff, too. It can't be on the shoulders of just Brookings County. And so it's nice when everybody has a little skin in the game, so-called. So.
Right, right.
I appreciate your work prior to that. It's a lot easier sale to us, knowing that there's willingness from the other sides to collaborate together. So I think you've got about it the right way and I'm definitely supportive of it.
Commissioner Jensen?
You know, the fact that the schools have come forward with money to support this and it's too bad, you know, you're talking a couple hours in each school, but it, you could increase, you know. It'll be, any interaction involvement you can have with the youth there will help oversee and, and hopefully help them out. So I'm supportive also.
I think we have a consensus. I agree with what each of you have said and I think you're authorized to go forward and there's no action that we need to take today.
No, no. It's, it's, it's good because it's budget time. And, and again, I needed to, to make sure that, that I had backing from the commission before I could continue because they may, they, a couple of school districts says that, you know, they're going to have to find the money, you know. And then when they find the money, they may have to cut something, too. If, so there's still some, they have to work out some things, too, if they can come up with the money, too. So it's, it's a start, but it's not, it's, it's not over yet. So, but at least I needed to, to come forward and, and if you guys said this is not the right time or whatever, then there's no reason to, to move on with the schools. So, and again, it's good timing because it's budget time. So I'll come with a full proposal and, yeah, once, once I get all school districts on, on board and stuff. So, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the work you're doing on that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks.
Dick, did you want to come on back up?
Okay. So basically, one of the main items, when I met with Doug Westall last Tuesday, we went over the final and reviewed the plans for our two small structures this summer. As you've seen on the report, the two prices are strictly for the pre-cast box. We contribute in-kind labor and materials for those. And so it's been working out very positive in the last few years to use this method to do the construction of our, our smaller boxes. In almost a related note, I have also mentioned the calls I got from three different townships that have projects they would like to more or less pay the $500 upfront and have us take care of the rest of the cost for replacing their box culverts. And what I tried to explain to them was, especially with this new bill 1107, where they clarified and, and addressed this issue about the culverts over 16 square feet, was that one, the townships need to come with a formal request to the Board of Commissioners, first of all, so that you realize that it's a legitimate request. Secondly, I told them that they need to remember that our funds are limited also. And so it would be up to the board to decide. And, and part of this bill, House Bill 1107, states that before any work is done, the county and the township would come to an agreement as to how the remaining cost for that project would be paid for. And I, I, I think they understood and I think they all will still come with a formal request. The cost could be as small as like $6,000, but it, like the one by Volga, could be closer to a hundred some thousand dollars. So anyway, what we need to do is just kind of get a, train a thought as these proposals come forward as to, are we going to have criteria set forth of what we think is, is worthwhile of reimbursement? Are we going to say, sorry, we don't have any money? It would be up to you as a board to kind of come up with some answers for them, once the formal request would come due. On the other two projects, like the city of Volga with their Samara Avenue and some of them, as you know, that'll be an extremely significant project. Basically, I think what Jamison is looking for from me in the very near future is, you know, is the county still interested in being an active participant in that? Or is it, it kind of went by the wayside? Because I, I mentioned to him also that I said, you know, since this discussion took place, there's quite a few different things that have taken place on the county level. So that, that's one of the other things we have to. So that, that's one of the other things we have to look at. There's the one down in Elkton where the mayor stopped. That is a state project on Highway thirteen that they have not made me aware of it, and it's basically in the real infancy stage of development. But what they would really like to do down in Elkton is buy that property where the convenience store is, make the access into Elkton off of Highway thirteen, one location, and get rid of the two, our Highway thirty-three and Highway thirty. One comes in right north of the tracks, the other one comes in at the north end of the curve. He has the, an idea that might be worth discussing, and that's where if, if we would change the access of that Highway thirty-three that's south of the tracks, go west further and come in at a ninety-degree angle, the state might find that acceptable. And, but the other thing I also shared with Dave was that, first of all, it's a highway DOT project. It's not ours or the city of Elkton's. And, you know, keeping the communication open would certainly be advantageous because this would be a time that should there be a interest in doing something different, this would be a good time to maybe include it. So anyway, to make a long story short with all these projects that are coming forward, I guess what I'm looking for from the board is a sense of direction as to how you want me to proceed. Because like, for example, like I told the townships, it, it wouldn't be to your advantage to come with a proposal without having a semi-serious quote as to what the project would cost. You need to know what we would be looking at. The other thing, if, if we don't want to be a participant in any of these things, I, I guess it, it would probably be in my mind, better bet to let people know, and then we'll, we'll go on. Also, with these other projects that we have, as you know, soon we'll be going into our strategic planning, which relates into our budgetary process. If at that time you think it would be good to set up a fund for covering these projects that townships might entertain, or the city of Elkton, or something like that, that could be a possibility, too. But I guess my thinking would be, the less I would leave these people lingering with unknowns, I think it would be better to put them up front with not a finite decision on your part, but at least an idea of what, what we're thinking of. With that, I guess I'd open it up to questions. I didn't touch on everything because some of them were pretty minor, just routine business, so to speak, so.
If, if y'all don't mind, I have a question that would, I'd like to have an answer to before we start discussing. Could, could we talk about the two short structures and how they relate to the, the short span structures report that we received from Banner last fall? And that report does not include the township culverts, right? Because they're not considered a county short structure.
Correct.
So the, the two short structures that are listed on your written report, which I really appreciate, thank you very much. The first one talks about the box south of Sinai. And in that report, we talk about the, the structure that's southwest of Volga. Are those the same thing?
Yes.
We're just calling them different names?
Right.
Okay, that's, that was the number one thing. And then I wanted to know if those other structures from the townships, they don't show up on that report. Are they inspected in any way, shape, or manner?
No. What they are is the township coming to the conclusion that those smaller structures, most of them will be like in the neighborhood of four by six, four by eight, something like that, that they need attention and, and really need replacement. Well, again, when they only have to come up with five hundred dollars, that's pretty easy to come up with a pretty good list of projects that would be worthy of taking a look.
And I just wanted to know if they were inspected, so go ahead. Anybody else have questions?
Like, Nick, on these township culverts, as they come, as they make the request, will the township request what they want them replaced with?
Yes, and one thing that I've shared with each and every one of them was, if you would expect the county to contribute any money whatsoever, it would be done through an engineering recommendation so that if you're not replacing like materials with like materials, we're covered as far as not being, contributing to an adverse effect down the road.
The reason I ask, you know, in the past, sometimes the county was willing to donate a culvert, and the township was required to hire a contractor and do the work.
Right.
I mean, that was an agreement that was made. As each of these townships bring their request in, they'll have to include what they expect so we, you know, we can look at them.
Correct.
And as long as they qualify in size with the sixteen square, you know, that we should look at them and make a decision at that time, how much.
Exactly, and I, all of the people that called me were newer chairmans and whatever, so I kind of explained to them just what Larry described, and they understood. And, and also, the other thing that, that I made clear was, the biggest part of this process is we don't want them to get the idea that they can just go out and hire it done and then start sending the county bills. That won't fly either.
Right.
So I, I think we've got a, a good thing going, but I don't, I think there's a lot more work out there, obviously, than what they've come forward with in the past, and they might get a little more direct in their, in their request, be it a monetary amount or whether it be a culvert or providing something. So I think it's just good to make the board aware that, that these will be coming up.
A sixteen-foot-square culvert, what do we pay for that?
Well, it's sixteen-square-feet opening.
Right.
So roughly, it would be comparable to like a forty-eight or fifty-inch round pipe that would be in the neighborhood of probably about a hundred and forty-some dollars a foot. I think an eighteen-inch is a hundred and ten or something like that, so.
I was trying to figure out if we were offering to provide the culverts approximately how much they'd cost a piece.
Right.
And I know they're all different sizes, but.
The only, the last ones that I was aware of were the two north of Sinai on that gravel, two fourteen or whatever. We contributed two older culverts that we had just standby, and I think it was to dig them in and everything was like six thousand dollars. So if you went with all new materials, it would be more than that, obviously. The other thing that I, and the state is doing the same to us, but with this grant program, how they're insisting that we show we did a conscious effort to maintain these structures, not just let them go to pieces and then ask for a grant to replace them. I, I've also explained to townships in the past that they're always responsible for the ongoing maintenance of any of these structures, no matter what the size. And, and I've told a couple of them that didn't go over very well, but I said, wait until it collapses and then call the county as not due maintenance or due diligence as far as maintenance of taking care of those. So I think with these new people, if we get them educated on the process they need to go through, and if they can start to show, you know, that maybe it was an unforeseen thing, what happened, maybe, maybe that would be a good choice to ask for assistance. But if it's an old structure that's never been dealt with, you might have a different opinion, so. Any other questions?
If nobody else has, I have one more question. So on our short structure list, there were eight structures that was recommended that we, we replaced. And two of them are on, on this list for 2018. What are your plans for the other six?
The, the others we will deal with almost on an annual basis because they're more safety-orientated as far as the replacement value. In other words, they're too narrow, or they create a bottleneck, something like that. Structurally, they're sound, but they're maybe not the best. This is the point where if we decide, or if we get that money that we've been putting aside each year to replace the, the ones that are limited in their integrity, move on to either bridges like the one south of Basin Electric that has the broken piling and stuff like that. I would come up with a list of projects through recommendations, hopefully with, with the support of Banner staff, that we will start saying, well, I think it'd be good to spend that amount of money on a structure to put a new deck on. I think it would be better to maybe limit the small structures or deal with all the township ones for a given year. Different scenarios. A, a, a real good example is the bridge decking that we're going to be opening, the bid's at ten, is a lower-profile, more of a box-type beam instead of a double-T bulb. If, if they work as good as they do, and, and the bridge out on Highway sixteen that will, would serve as a unbelievable primary detour route when we're doing these other bridges on twelve and seventy-seven to get things into town, it would be, right now that, that has a load limits on it. But if we could get our contract labor this summer to replace that deck with these new box things, very little difference in grade or changes to the road, we could, we could have that as a primary detour used while these other bridges are going. If we don't, when those other three bridges are done, they're just going to have to find a long way around. So that's what I would anticipate doing. I would, I would do it on an annual basis to review what would give us the most bang for our buck, be it another small structure. We've got unlimited number of small structures. We've got tons of bigger culverts we could replace. We've got bridges that could use repairs. Also, you triggered another item. I talked with Colin yesterday, and on our preservation grants, that's going ahead, and so hopefully we'll get our epoxy coats done this year. So everything will be pretty well busy, busy, busy this summer, so.
Seven, nine-thirty. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We have a scheduled agenda item at nine-thirty for the second reading and public hearing on ordinance number 2018-02. And this is an ordinance that reads, "An ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance 2015-03, whereas Brookings County previously adopted ordinance 2015-03, which re-adopted the 1997 revised zoning ordinance in accordance with Chapter 11-2. And whereas Brookings County, South Dakota Board of County Commissioners deems it necessary for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and the general welfare of the county to amend ordinance 2015-03 by repealing the following articles. Article five, County Zoning Commission Appeals, Variants, and Conditional Uses. Article six, Duties of County Zoning Officer, Board of County Commissioners, and Courts on Matters of Appeal. Article seven, Enforcement. Article eight, Schedule of Fees, Charges, and Expenses. Article ten, Amendments, and replacing said articles with Article six, a copy of which is attached here to Administration, Chapter six oh one, General; Chapter six oh two, Zoning Official; Chapter six oh three, Planning and Zoning Commission; Chapter six oh four, Board of Adjustment; Chapter six oh five, Procedures for Conditional Uses, Variances, and Zoning Amendments; and Chapter six oh six, Repeal of Conflicting Ordnances. Therefore, be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, that ordinance 2015-03 is hereby amended by repealing the following articles. Article five, County Zoning Commission Appeals, Variances, and Conditional Uses. Article six, Duties of County Zoning Officer, Board of County Commissioners, and Courts on Matters of Appeal. Article seven, Enforcement. Article eight, Schedule of Fees, Charges, and Expenses. Article ten, Amendments, and replacing said articles with Article six, a copy of which is attached here to Administration, Chapter six oh one, General; Chapter six oh two, Zoning Official; Chapter six oh three, Planning and Zoning Commission; Chapter six oh four, Board of Adjustment; Chapter six oh five, Procedures for Conditional Uses, Variances, and Zoning Amendments; and Chapter six oh six, Repeal of Conflicting Ordnances." This is the time and place for the public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone here to testify in favor?
Good morning, Commissioner. The, this, this item was brought before you a couple of months ago now, and it was sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and bring back to you with, with further recommendations. And on page thirteen of the document, which is Chapter six point oh five, number ten, that item was changed. Now the new statement is, "A conditional use permit is transferable subject to the new permit, the signing a letter agreeing to the same terms of the previous issued letters of assurance slash findings of facts." And that's basically the only change from the last document that, that you guys had seen. And we did get a lot of, a lot of contact from the civilian or from the public on this particular thing, and the zoning commission did meet and had a, had a discussion on it. And on the final vote, I believe it was unanimous to bring, to bring this document before the board this time.
Anyone else that is here to testify in favor of the ordinance? Anyone to testify against the ordinance? Public hearing will be closed? Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
I think, just as a matter of information, that what was decided, I think, at the Funding and Zoning Board, is this might be an area that when we get done with our whole revision process, that could be revisited when there could be more study on it. And if so, then that could come back at another time. But we needed to get an administrative ordinance passed. Anybody else have anything to say? Would you call the roll?
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On item six B two for the Finance Office, Vicki's not here, we have those documents.
You missed Misty.
Misty, are you here for Vicki on those?
No.
Oh.
She's got her own department head report.
Oh, excuse me, we're going to come back to that, okay? I was going to say, okay. On those documents, do we need to take any action, note them or, or anything? They're just there for information's sake?
They are, yeah, they're just there for information's sake. The first is the county surplus auction of the two properties that notice, so Wednesday, March twenty-eighth, the property in white, that's... The property in White, that sale time is at 10:30, and then the property in Bruce at 12:30. And then, Chris may be able to speak to this. This was actually something that Vicki got in response to the sales and compliance audit that they did in the Equalization Office, but it goes to the county auditors, county finance officers, to pass along to the commission, basically saying that they conducted the audit. And I think Chris has already shared the results of that audit with you anyway, so...
Yep, that's all it is. Just saying, the auditor was here, went through all of our sales and all of our information, and it was all found to be in order. Again, one of his highlights in there that he mentioned is, I've brought to you, too, we're encroaching in the need for another appraiser in the future. We're probably a couple of years away, but we're getting there. So, just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you. Misty, would you like to come up and give your report?
Good morning. I've done a little bit of traveling, and I'm going to go back to February 12th because I haven't been able to make it to a meeting. February 12th through the 16th was the annual weed and pest conference out in Rapid City. A lot of good information, a lot of information at that conference. While I was there, I attended a meeting with the data logger gentleman. And I am going to wipe out everything I've already done on my data logger and start fresh. The only, if we wanted to update our system, we would have to pay him an extra $750 so we can get the new box. We'd still have to pay our annual fee, which I will definitely do because we've got the equipment. We might as well use it. So, otherwise, that went well out there. February 23rd, I attended, I and three of my guys, attended Gopher Re-Certification down in Sioux Falls, so everybody's license is up to date. February 28th, I attended the Cottageton County Weed and Pest Annual Meeting at 6:00 PM there, and I took away some information from there, which was great. March 1st, I attended Hamlin County Weed and Pest Meeting. March 7th, we opened bids at 11:00 AM, and we'll get to that in the scheduled agenda. dicamba meeting in Watertown, I attended that on March 8th. It was a lot of redundant information we've already known, but I did take a few things away from there so I can show my employees. We can kind of be on the watch for that. We don't plan on spraying dicamba, but if I would ever have to, it would be on my license. Yesterday, March 12th, we had our annual weed and pest meeting. Thank you for attending, all of you that did. Next year, it sounds like we will have our meeting together. Everybody agreed that that would be the best. So, otherwise, I don't have anything else. Is there any questions for me?
Thank you for all your work yesterday.
You're welcome.
That brings us to regular business. Item A, Action to Approve Resolution 1807, a Bridge Inspection Program Resolution for Use with South Dakota DOT Retainer Contracts.
Move approval.
Second.
Dick, did you want to say anything about that?
Basically, that's the hiring Banner and Branner, excuse me, Banner is on the approved list, so I would recommend staying with him.
Anything else? All the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Action to Approve Resolution 1808, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one-wheel loader off of a state Minnesota bid.
Second.
Any discussion?
Deck intentions, this will be replacing another wheel loader, or we're going to surplus one, or?
Yes.
What year one is it replacing, I guess?
Oh, it's a 2000 CAT, the 950. So, it's 18 years old.
I'm sure it's got a lot of hours and everything.
Right, yes. And we've got it lined up, so when we sell it on surplus, we've got a guaranteed bid, so it should work out real well.
Any other questions?
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Action to Approve Resolution 1809, a resolution on a compromise and settlement of a county aid lien in the amount of $11,285.20 for $7,000.
Move approval.
Second for discussion.
And Mike, if you want to go ahead?
Good morning. What this is, this is 20-year-old court-appointed attorney fees. The gentleman has gotten married since then, has turned his life around, is with his family and stuff. And what has happened is, they went out to buy a house. They thought everything was in order until they did another search, and then they found that their lien was out there against them. They have the money for closing, their closing costs and stuff, but they didn't have another 11,000. I said, "What kind of compromise can we come up with?" I told them that if they could do the 7,000, that I would come before you and say that this is really a good deal for the county, in my opinion, since it's a 20-year-old bill that hadn't been paid. This will allow them to get into a house and to pay property tax and contribute to the county in that way.
In making your recommendation to us, did you look at what resources they have available to them?
I did. I came in, I had a sit-down with them. We went through some of their finances and to see where it's at. And the one that's just started kind of a new job, but I guess as long as the lending institution, part of what they're using is what's called a VA home loan. He's also a veteran. But using the VA home loan, they don't have to have quite as much money upfront. They can finance more of it. And so, this would give them that step, and they do have a small child that, their current living situation is not what I would call ideal for a family.
Any other questions? All the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Action to Approve Agreement 18-13 is amended, an agreement between Brookings County, South Dakota, and the State of South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for construction of two office spaces for use by employees of the state at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Did somebody just want to make a notice to what the changes were?
I think we had approved this last time, and then we sent it out to the state. And it wasn't necessarily the state, it was the Bureau of, I can't remember, somebody, Bureau of Administration had a change. And so, they came back and...
There were a couple of sections. There was like a 1F and a 2D, both contain the whole harmless language that was deleted out of this contract. I think that, I think that's, I think that's what they did. Those were the two changes that they made.
Any comment from counsel?
I have reviewed the agreement, and it looks fine to me.
Anybody else?
They've signed it, so if we're good with it, we'll sign it. We've had a deal.
All the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to Approve Agreement 18-18, a construction contract between Brookings County and Robbins Construction and Inspection, Inc.
Move approval. Second.
There was one change made. I put a new agreement in front of you this morning under Article 4, A4, for payment. And then, there's A2. The verbiage was upon substantial performance of the work pay to the constructor on any unpaid balance. That word substantial has been removed so that we will pay them in full once the, once the construction is complete.
Complete. Any questions or comments? Did you want to add anything, Steve?
I did visit with the contractor, and those changes are acceptable.
All right, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, Action to Approve Agreement 18-35, an independent contractor agreement between Brookings County and South Paw Defense LLC for firearm instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
This one was presented to the advisory board, and at that time, the South Paw Defense person wanted the indemnification agreement taken out. I discussed this with counsel. He also wanted to be able to do more days a month, if necessary, than what the contract specified. And so, we, that's what the changes were in this contract, if that meets the approval of the commission.
Compared to the previous contract.
I had some concerns about the fact that when we're doing business with an LLC versus an individual, and the indemnification language is taken out, indemnification language probably didn't have any meaning for the LLC anyway, because the LLC really limits any liability. If a person is working for the LLC and teaches a firearms course and somebody gets hurt, we only have recourse against the assets of the LLC, not against the individual who is teaching the course. And I have some concerns about us doing that without an insurance requirement in there. And the second question I had had to do with Part 2.5, where we talk about volunteer hours. Does an LLC get volunteer hours? Those were my two concerns about the agreement. And I know you guys asked last time, can we use the same agreement for everybody? We can for people, but I'm thinking maybe if we're doing it with an LLC, we maybe should tailor toward that type of business entity a little bit more than what this agreement is written.
I guess on the volunteer hours, normally, the volunteer goes to the person that's volunteering, not necessarily the LLC.
Right. I'd have to say that in the agreement.
That's fine.
I guess I'd be interested in knowing what Steve's opinion is on the liability issue. And if anyone's talked to our insurance carrier, if we're doing business with an LLC then that's not maintaining insurance, right?
Right.
Well, we do require...
Does the LLC have insurance? So, we're saying we're not, we don't have that as a requirement here?
Right.
Yeah, I didn't see an insurance requirement in this agreement. I think anybody that's in that line of work, you know, should have some concern about insurability or having insurance coverage. It's not mandated by the agreement. I'm not as concerned about the indemnification, you know, because indemnification is just an alternative to simplify probably a recoupment of losses if there was an accident. So, I would presume that they probably are not carrying insurance in this kind of situation. I mean, he's formed an LLC, but I'm not sure that he probably has insurance, and I do not know if he does or not.
And I can't verify it either, but he has taught these classes before, previously. And so, my thought would, he would have insurance, but I don't, I don't know for sure. I can't verify that. So, if we need to put that into the contract to make sure he does, I certainly could see that.
Time is of the essence. He's got classes ready to go.
I would think that we would, just for discussion purposes, you know, that that instruction would be a routine part of the use of the facility, and that we would have liability coverage through the pool for the customary activities. And so, I would presume that, you know, we would have insurance coverage. Now, what are they going to cover? They're going to cover activities in which the county's volunteers or organizations operated by the volunteers would create a situation which results in a loss. And so, I would presume that we would have coverage for an accident that would occur, either, for example, a discharge of a firearm that was accidentally discharged and injured someone. I would think that if all of these steps are to, in the customary use of the facility and our customary programming, that there would be coverage.
Our volunteer list, though, which we've spent considerable monitime working on having this right, applies to our liability as well as to our workers' comp. Am I correct on that?
Volunteers are only covered under work comp.
Okay. So, when, on our liability coverage, if we have a volunteer that commits an act of negligence, we have coverage, though, under our liability, right?
Yes. I mean, as part of the facility, yes, we have coverage.
But what I, what I don't know, and this is the question I had, is we're not dealing with a person, we're dealing with an LLC. And does our insurance carrier provide coverage when we're not dealing with a person and we're dealing with an LLC instead? That was my concern.
And that I would have to ask. I don't know that off the top of my head.
I don't know either.
I would think that there would be a likelihood if the, you know, there would be coverage in a sense, because really, the actions are what we're concerned about. And if they're performed by an LLC or a individual, it would not be unlike if we had a contractor working that caused an accident on the premises, construction or something like that, that there would be coverage in that case as well.
I would like to see us go ahead and pass this, and I think we can research whether or not that LLC has insurance, and that will help solve the problem. If he doesn't, we can look at this contract again, but in the interest of moving forward, he has these classes lined up to teach. I would like to let him be able to teach them.
When are the classes?
I don't know. He's, I don't know. He's got them lined up. He's just waiting for this contract.
One suggestion could be that, you know, we could approve it on the condition that the services before they're performed, that there would be insurance coverage, either under a policy that he currently has that we're not aware of, or under the county's policy. And if you wanted to add, that the insurance coverage should be carried by the LLC before he teaches classes, you could add that to the requirement. And then, in a sense, we could make sure we have coverage, at least temporarily through the county, until he has coverage in place. And if it doesn't work out, perhaps, then he wouldn't be able to teach those classes.
Or we could approve him to teach those classes as an individual while we get the contract worked out. I mean, we have people teaching classes anyway. We could go ahead and authorize that, and then we can get our contract worked out.
But doesn't it come up that we have individuals, volunteers, teaching classes, but they're not compensated for it?
Right.
That's the difference here. I mean, he's, he's being compensated for...
Right.
His work.
So, your proposal, Steve, then, is that we could approve this agreement, subject to proof of insurance, either would Stacy contact the poll to see if we'd have coverage in this instance, and one of the two of you maybe talk to Mr. Kilmer and see if he's got coverage? one of the two of you maybe talk to Mr. Kilmer and see if he's got coverage? That's your recommendation?
And then require, you know, that there be proof of insurance or some evidence that we've got coverage before the classes are taught.
So we're looking at an amendment. At this particular time, I'll make an amendment that insurance be provided either by the LLC or the county prior to signing of the contract.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The amendment passes. Are we ready to vote on the, on the motion itself? We'll do a roll call vote on that.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Main motion as amended, carry.
Next, we have a scheduled agenda item. Toby Morris from Dordie and Company to discuss and review TIF districts as relates to the Prairie Aquatec project near Volga. Come forward and please introduce yourself for the record and go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Chairperson. Toby Morris, Dordie and Company. We're a financial advisor, underwriter to city, schools, counties, state government throughout South Dakota. I believe my colleague is working with you on the detention center, the law enforcement jail that's coming up. Actually worked with this building here about six, seven years ago and financed that. So when we're not doing financing, one of the things I specialize in is economic development, in particular, tax increment financing. And with your permission, I would like to just have a few handouts to go through this. Talking with Stacy prior to this, I thought what I would do is maybe give a 20, 30,000-foot view of how tax increment works. The request that's here before you, I don't know if I should assume that you're familiar with the Prairie Aquatec project. We have representatives from the company that can give an overview as well. So if you just give me a little guidance on what you'd like to do, but I thought maybe I'd start with tax increment financing as a whole. When you look at a TIF, is what we call it, I've probably worked on 50, 60 of them throughout the state, served as a senior advisor to the governor's office whenever we do any kind of legislative changes to make certain that, one, it's a tool for communities to use, but just as important as to make sure that there's no loopholes within the law to take advantage of anything because they can be a little bit complicated. What I try to do though is, is take the complicatedness out and make it as straightforward as possible. When you look at a tax increment district, I believe you guys had one, was about 12, 15 years ago with the ethanol plant, and this would be the second one. So I don't want to assume you're familiar with it, but...
And that one's been paid off.
That one's been paid off. That's right. And that was ahead of schedule too. I think I worked with Joyce on that years ago. But what it does is it allows a company to use the taxes that they pay in. It's not a tax break, but it's what they use their taxes to pay in to offset infrastructure costs. The biggest question that you always ask yourself with a TIF is the but for, meaning would this project happen but for the TIF? And in this case, I think we can make a very strong case that says without the TIF, this one happened because you're dealing with a startup. There's an element higher risk that's associated with that. So every capital dollar is extremely important. We're dealing with a little bit higher infrastructure costs and we can get a layout of that as well and show that to you. So that's what I would call my smell test. So looking at it from that standpoint, we know what we feel is the but for test. When the TIF is put in place, as they pay, on the, the second page, you'll see there's a graph of that handout, not the agenda, but of the handout, that shows how the increment works. So you're starting with a base value today. Yep, right there. And over time, as construction happens and there's more of an assessed value, it's that gray area is which goes back to, to offset the infrastructure costs. What you typically always find with TIFs are you generally have three or four times eligible costs versus eligible revenue. So what I do is I work it backwards and I say, look, if the company's projecting to pay 100,000 in taxes, that would go towards the TIF and we use the TIF for 17 years, that's 1.7 million. So there's no sense in creating a TIF for three or $4 million. And then what I also like to do is say it's 1.7 million and it's 0%. So we're not worried about accrued interest. It's set up so that it's a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement. The other big thing that I always do, because I fall on the side of the governments quite a bit, is protecting the county. So what you are is a conduit. You're not the actual borrower to it. It is only the company that will be the borrower when they try to monetize this revenue stream. Now, I've gone round and round with legislative audit and they say it's still constitutional debt and that's where it's, it is, but it's a debt with no liability on your side. The only liability you would have is to pass that increment on per the developer agreement that's set up in place. And so should something happen to Prairie Aquatec in say five or seven years, you will not be harmed in any way. We state throughout the developer's agreement that is not a taxing authority's responsibility on that. Rather, the only responsibility you have is to pass on the allowed increment that we put in the plan. There's several steps that go into a TIF. It's always open book because there are some questions that come from the public and we encourage the questions from the public. And when we write the TIF plan, it lays out anywhere from 40 to 60 pages what the project is, what the economic feasibility study will be, what the projected revenue is going to be, what the reimbursement is going towards. So if you look at, like at the bottom of this page here, when I talk about eligible costs, and this is just very broad at this point, but when we break down the land acquisition, the civil and the electrical, which under codified law are eligible costs, what you don't see in here is you're not seeing professional fees, you're not seeing developer fees. Once again, it goes back to what I call the smell test. It needs to offset those obstacles, which are typically that infrastructure. So even though there'd be 7.4 million of, you know, of roughly a 40, $45 million project, we could see the request coming in at about 2.4 million. I'll do the analysis to justify that 2.4 million to, based on the data that's most available. Obviously, when the final assessment goes into place, if, if it's higher, if it's, if it's lower, let's say if it's higher, that TIF gets paid off sooner. If it's lower, then that becomes the problem for Prairie Aquatec in terms of how they monetize that. And so it's really just setting it up with both feet going forward at the, at the front end saying, based on all the data that we know, we know there may be a bump in the road, but there's no liability to the county as it goes forward. And that's all spelled out in the TIF plan. More importantly, it's spelled out in the developer's agreement. Help me here because I know we've written a few together over the time, but that's the contract between the county and the developer. That's what you will abide by from the developer's side who, who makes this happen. There's a couple of steps. We go before the planning and zoning, so it's always advertised 10 days, so the public has input on that. They recommend the boundaries and then pass that up to the commission level here. You approve the TIF plan. More importantly, you approve the developer's agreement. Every step of the way, the county's in the driver's seat. Even when the deal is closed, you're still in the driver's seat because you have the developer's agreement in place to make certain that, that contract is upheld. If something happens, once again, you know, I know I'm stressing this a lot, we absolutely remove the liability on anything on the county's side. So you're a partner in economic development. You're not issuing the debt and able to help a project that I think really passes the but for test. Now, I know I've skimmed through this quite a bit. Stacy said I had under 10, 15 minutes, so I'm very cognizant of your time. Mr. Bartley hasn't given me the evil eye yet, so I think we're okay. But I can go through things more specifically. Just wanted to give you the global view at it at this time and maybe open up for questions.
Discretionary formula?
That is waived.
That is waived, right?
Yes. Yep, that's part of the developer's agreement.
You know, Toby, we've used this obviously many times in the city and around the university and so forth, but, well, not the university, but our past with Varison, obviously it was paid off early. Do you anticipate that as a possibility in this one that it could be paid off early?
I'm extremely conservative with my projections. If there was wood to knock on, I'd say I have not had one that's not paid off. I typically like to structure them around that 15, 16 years to get them paid off. The tough part is because it's a new facility that you don't have a comparable on assessment, you know, it's working with the assessor to say, what might this come in? Because you have a tremendous amount of equipment like an ethanol, because, just because it's built at 45 million, doesn't mean it's going to get assessed at 45.
Second thing, I think, just for the public to understand, is you've protected the county up to this point with your presentation, is the impact to schools. Obviously, if there's no development here, there's no impact. And if there's development, there's still no impact with the development. So I think if you could just address that for a little bit.
Absolutely.
General fund is held harmless, but the state of South Dakota makes up the difference to the school district. So people understand how that happens, that it's not affecting the school district directly.
When you classify a TIF, the state of South Dakota will classify it really one of two ways. They'll classify it as economic development, which is sort of an ambiguous word because what development in Brookings is not maybe development in Eagle Bute, but they, the state understands what development is, or they may classify it as other. The difference comes down to is economic development means that, that goes into their formula when it's funding schools. So in essence, all the TIF statewide are equalized statewide. It affects our mill levies probably less than 1/10 of a percent. But in other words, what the TIFs we do in Brookings, the folks in Sioux Falls have, have offset. What the TIFs do in Pierre, we've offset by Sioux Falls and so forth. So it's equalized statewide so that the general fund of the school is held harmless. It used to have an impact to capital outlay because that valuation is held outside the formula. Now, they've changed capital outlay with the schools where it's on a per-student basis. And so it would have a zero effect on that based on the math and the conversations I've had with Department of Revenue. Now, going forward, they always, you know how Pierre is, they like to change legislation every year. But right now, we can say it'll, it'll have a zero impact on the school funding formula. What schools will tell you is the most important thing to them right now is heartbeats. So if you have more jobs that bring families, because everything is going to an enrollment based for their future funding. Great question.
Thank you.
Was there a TIF bill in the legislature this legislative session and what happened to it?
The TIF bill this year, actually worked on it quite closely with administration, was to get clarification mainly on housing. We've always been a little bit in the gray area and I've argued and done TIFs for Brookings for affordable housing. Well, what happened was some communities took housing to the next step and said, well, maybe it's a half a million dollar home. I said, no, it shouldn't be that way. So we put in parameters to classify what affordable housing was. And if it's single-family homes, it had to meet the criteria of the first-time home purchaser's price with the South Dakota Housing Authority. If it was multi-family, then we went to what they call the LMI equation within each and county, so we restricted the rent. So we're not having $1,800 a month apartments with granite countertops and things like that. It was really meant to address our workforce development issue within the state of South
And the purpose here today, you're just educating us and...
Educating, seeking permission to move forward. I don't know if it necessarily has to be on a formal vote, but if there's major concerns, I always do what I like to call the temperature test to see. Some communities embrace TIFs, others do not for their own reasons. I do, you know, I stick to the technical, not the political. I've gotten in trouble with that, so I stay out of that realm. But it was really to educate you more about the project, about TIFs. We'd like to move forward. I can promise you it's going to, and I hate to say it this way, it'll probably move a little slow by design because I want to make sure if there's questions along the way, you feel comfortable. We vet it out. It is a public process.
Once, should this all happen and once the company is up and going, how many people would it employ?
You know, I'll leave that to Mark if you want to address that. 35.
Good.
I'd encourage you to move forward. This is the type of economic development that TIFs I think were originally designed to work for, not necessarily housing. And that's always been an issue with TIFs as a housing component, and we've used it in Brookings. But I think this type of economic development is what it was intended for and I'd encourage us to move forward with it. Obviously, there's more information to be had as we go along, but this is what it was really, really designed to work for, essentially.
Anyone else?
And from my perspective, I'm supportive of this, but I would say that I would want to see, because of some other problems that have occurred in Brookings County, something that supports the financial condition of the applicants before we made any type of decision. That'd be my position.
Could I ask you to clarify that a little bit in terms of the financial condition and the term sheets of the banks, things like that to make sure...
Exactly.
I can't agree with you more, trust me. I, from a personal side, I don't get involved in projects unless I know they're going to cross the finish line on the financial. And we'll definitely provide the necessary... Exactly. I've, I've chased a lot of rainbows and I don't do that anymore.
So, I think I heard a consensus. Commissioner Jensen, were you on board too? Keep moving forward with the process. We don't make any promises, but we're interested in working with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're back to regular business. Item number H, action to approve agreement 18-20, a quote from Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the ongoing use of cloud storage.
We actually skipped G.
Oh, excuse me. Action to approve agreement 18-19, an agreement between Brookings County and the City of Aurora for General Law Enforcement Services.
So move.
Second. Anything to add to that, Sheriff?
No, I was just an update. We did the other three towns and Aurora lost their contracts. We had to redo it and get it to the commission or get it to their com...
Any questions from the commission? Call the rule.
Jensen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, item number H, action to approve agreement 18-20, a quote from Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the ongoing use of cloud storage.
Move approval.
Second. Sean, were you here to talk about this?
In the event you guys have any questions about it, I can answer them. I've been working with the sheriff and with Axon to get the prices together. The main reason this is coming in front of you is because normally the, in the past, our cost has been around $1,800 a year. They restructured their licensing this past year and in order to maintain the same level of service, our price went up to the $3,138.96. If we want to maintain the body cameras with the cloud option, we don't have much of an option. We can turn off the cloud and they're still functional, but a lot of the convenience and the ease of use goes out. Well, they aren't as easy to use for the deputies. They aren't quite as self-maintaining if we get rid of that. if we get rid of that option. If the sheriff adds another deputy, we'll have to purchase another license, which will be an additional $180 a year. So whenever, if or when that happens, we'll be looking at another.
Does the state's attorney's office access those videos off of this cloud, then?
No, no. They, this is, this is more or less temporary storage. Last year, we purchased a large storage device, and things that need to be retained for trial, possible trial, or any other evidentiary reasons, get downloaded and stored on that device, which also backs up to an external, a cloud service of some sort. This would not have enough space to hold all the deputies' videos for... I think we could probably get about three months' worth of storage out of it, but beyond that, we'd be filling up what we have there with just their body camera videos.
This is a three-year contract.
But this is, this is a one-year, well, it's a five-year...
Five-year, okay.
Agreement. We have the option at basically any time, if next year we decided not to fund it, or fund this portion of the cameras out of our budget, we could get out of the contract.
You know, not very, you're the professional in this stuff, I'm not. Why do we, why do we need this cloud for the cameras there if, if we're taking the stuff that's recorded that could be used in courts and putting it downloaded on our own stuff? Why are we using the cloud for it?
A lot of it is the ease.
And explain the ease for me. What's the difference between...
There's an application that we install on all the computers that allows the deputies to literally plug in their camera, click upload, and it offloads all the video that's on their camera onto the cloud. And then, from there, if they need it later on, they can download it and move it wherever they want.
So if we didn't have this, what would the process go through?
The process would be substantially more cumbersome for the deputies. It'd require a large amount of user training. They would have to log into the same application, but it would store it somewhere else. They'd have to find that and then manually move it to wherever they need to store it for their long-term storage.
So we would have to find two places to store it, then?
We'd probably be able to get away with just the one, but it also doesn't allow the deputies, there are some deputies who don't make it into the office very often due to covering an entire county by themselves, and those deputies do actually offload their videos while they're in their vehicles. They'll plug into their in-car tablets and pull it off, just, some of them have actually filled up their body cameras completely, so...
So they wouldn't be able to do that anymore. They would have to come into the office.
They would have to come into the office. They would have to wait for it to transfer off.
And so why, why the increase in experience did they have? They said they redid their pricing. Is it more us that were doing it, or did they decide to raise their prices?
Some of it was a price adjustment. Some of it was, they had, basically, their licensing had worked sort of on the honor system, where we, when we initially signed up, we purchased a certain number of licenses. I believe it was nine or 10. Well, some of the ways we've used those licenses has changed, so that, for example, the, the second line down shows, is a basic evidence.com license. That's all we purchased initially. But John Pike, or Deputy Pike and Deputy Langstrat have both taken on administrative duties, managing the devices, reassigning devices, which moves them into the pro-evidence.com license. Well, that increases the price substantially. Also, I believe that we were getting a chunk of the storage for free as part of our initial agreement with Axon, or at least at a substantial discount, and that has gone away.
What was our previous agreement? Was that year-to-year?
It was a year-to-year agreement at approximately $1,800 a year for licensing and storage.
Just a large, I have to struggle with a large increase.
It is a substantial increase.
It's almost doubling. However, I don't like to burden our deputies anymore either. And if I remember correctly, when we initially did this, our options were not very many, or, at that time, the finances were not very far apart.
Well, and if I recall, well, I guess I don't recall. It was before my time, but the sheriff may recall that I believe a lot of the funds for, at least the equipment purchase, came through the drug fund. So we didn't have to worry about that portion of it, which, at least that first year, is the majority of your cost.
I have to thank Sean, because he's the technical guy, for me, too, is that, yeah, the original body cameras were purchased by the, by the drug funds. We have, you know, so that we never had that initial cost. The cost was the storage. Each deputy by policies to, required to upload or, every, at the end of the shift, they have to put that information in. Anytime that they have, initiates any contact with anyone, they have to use their body camera. So during traffic accidents and whatever, they have to turn on their body camera, and then we store that for a period of time until hopefully that information is not needed, and then they start erasing that, that information. But when you have a lot of contact during the day with your body camera, it just takes a lot of storage. But the body camera has saved us some money also on situations, too. It also is twofold on complaints. If I have a complaint on a deputy for his actions or something, I usually, then we review the body camera, and if the deputy's out of line, we take care of that. But the majority of the time, the deputy's following policy, and, so it's an aid for me in those situations, too. Heaven forbid that if we ever have a shooting, is that why we went to body cameras is, of course, of all nationwide, of everything that's happened nationwide. So it's a protection for the deputy and, and liability and exposure and those types of things. You know, we have tasers. There are cameras that go to the taser, you know. They've always suggested that you have a camera on your taser. But with the body cameras that we got, that takes care of that, too. So it's just, to be honest with you, the body cameras are just an essential part of the deputy's tool belt now. The problem we got is they get us on the storage and the maintenance and, and those types of things.
Do you have cameras in the vehicles?
Yes.
And is that downloaded, same situation, or...
That's on a separate, that's on a, and Sean can explain that probably better than I can.
Those are pulled directly from the vehicle when they're out in front of the sheriff's office. The vehicles each have three cameras. At any given time, at least two are recording. And then, when they pull into, well, when they pull in front of the sheriff's office, there's a wireless access point that they automatically connect to and download to a server within the sheriff's office. Then if they...
Those were purchased by the state also, so we have no initial investment. You know, these grants are great, but when it comes to replacement or added employees, then we pick up the tab. But it's the maintenance contracts and the storage that costs us a lot of money.
So it's a five-year contract. It's locked in for five...
It keeps our price the same over five years. If we add another deputy, it will, it will go up. I don't know if we'll necessarily be looking at adding any storage, but we will be adding another license, which is another $180 a year. And if there's another deputy three years down the line, then we'll be adding another one.
Anything further? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to approve the 2018 annual weed bid on all items listed to AgFirst Farmers Co-op. Misty, did you want to add anything?
I just want you to be aware that last year, Bendy Supply had gotten the contract, and it was only 220-gallon totes. Now, this year, it will be 250-gallon totes. So that will bring our price up just a little bit, $550 or so, give or take, for this year more.
Anything from the commissioners?
But the per-gallon price is lower than it was last year, correct?
That is correct. It's $9.30 a gallon this year. Last year, it was $10.39 a gallon.
All the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, annual highway bid recommendations. J1, action to award bid number one for rubberized crack-filling material to low bid on all items listed from Brock White Construction Materials, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Midstate Equipment, Mount Lake, Minnesota.
So move.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, action to award bid number two for road oil to low bid item MC-3000 and CR-S2-P from Flint Hills Resources, LP, Marshall, Minnesota, and low bid item MC-800 from Jebro, Inc., Sioux City, Iowa.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number three for P-Rock to low bid on all items listed from LG Everest, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Johnson Brothers, Madison, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number four for three-quarters crushed gravel to low bid on all items listed from Boz Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, and Sturzinger Construction, Alton, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number five for screened gravel to low bid on all items listed from Boz Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, and Johnson Brothers, Madison, South Dakota.
Move, move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number six for equipment rentals to low bid on all items listed from AJ Allers Excavating, Inc., Brookings, South Dakota, Boz Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, Butler Machinery, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Prusman Contracting, Brookings, South Dakota, Austrium Excavating, Brookings, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number seven for HR-class asphalt to low bid on all items listed from Boz Construction, Brookings, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to award bid number eight for Bitumia's Hot Mix to low bid on all items listed from Drunick, Inc., Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, annual purchase agreements for annual highway bids. Number one, action to approve agreement number 18-21, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Brock White Construction Materials of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, for rubberized crack-filling material.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-22, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Midstate's Equipment and Supply of Mount Lake, Minnesota, for rubberized crack-filling material.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-23, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Flint Hill of Marshall, Minnesota, for MC-3000 road oil and CR-S2-P.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement number 18-24, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Zebro, Inc. of Sioux City, Iowa, for MC-800 road oil.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-25, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and LG Everest of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, for P-Rock.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-26, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Johnson Brothers, Inc. of Madison, South Dakota, for P-Rock and screened gravel.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-27, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Boz Construction of Brookings, South Dakota, for screened gravel, three-force crust gravel, and HR-class asphalt.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-28, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Sturzinger Construction of Alton, South Dakota, for three-quarter crust gravel.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-29, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Drumenec, Inc. of Prinsburg, Minnesota, for Bitumia's Hot Mix.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L, right-of-way agreements. Action to approve agreement 18-30, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-31, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-32, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-33, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement 18-34, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M, abatements. Action to approve abatement 18-02, an abatement request made by RS and DD Investments LLC in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are you talking about these abatements, Chris?
Yes, I will. This one I recommend approval. Building's torn down.
Oh, okay.
So anytime a building is, was there on November 1, it's assessed for that full year. If it's torn down or destroyed for a multitude of reasons midway through the year, from the time we can verify it's removed, we can abate those property taxes for the portion of the year that it was not there to be taxed.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Stay in.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve abatement 18-03, an abatement request made by RS and DD Investments LLC in the amount of three hundred sixty dollars and twenty-four cents.
So move.
Second.
Same. Demo.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Stay in.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve abatement 18-04, an abatement request made by RS and DD Investments LLC in the amount of two hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Same, another demo. I recommend.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Upstain.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve abatement 18-05, an abatement request made by Fusion Developers LLC in the amount of five thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
So move.
Second.
This one is our office error. In, in... Along with the developers out there, when they took out their permits for plans on the apartments that were built, when we get those bigger projects, we usually request blueprints to verify our stuff, and they sent the incorrect blueprint. They sent us the blueprints for a larger apartment complex. They came in actually to look at doing an appeal this year, and we discovered that we had a measurement error or an entry error in the computer. We were evaluating a much larger building than what was there by basically two units, two apartment units. So it's our office error, and the only way to correct that is corrected going forward for the eighteen pay nineteen, but the seventeen pay eighteen, we missed it, so...
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve abatement 18-09, an abatement request made by Roger and Teresa Maxwell in the amount of fifty-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
So move.
Second.
I believe this was a mobile home that was removed and destroyed, so I recommend, again.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve abatement seventeen-09, an abatement request made by Mount Calvary Lutheran Church in the amount of one thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty cents.
Move approval for discussion.
Second.
All right, this one here is the one that, the reason I'm really up here. Mount Calvary, the situation is they had a parsonage. It was always tax exempt. They lost their pastor. The pastor went on someplace else. They rented the property out. We became aware of that. We put that back on the tax rolls for that next year. It had been taxed. Midway through the year, they acquired a new pastor and continued then to use that property as a parsonage, which then falls under tax exempt. However, at the, in November 1, when application is to be made, it wasn't used, so they didn't make application. It was midway through the year. She came in to do her tax exempt application for the eighteen pay nineteen, and in that discussion, she said, "Is there any way we can get that money back?" And at that time, I said, "Well, no. I, you can apply for an abatement. I can't deny you from applying, but I wouldn't be able to recommend it." And she asked me why, and I said, "But when was it a parsonage? I don't know. I can't take your word for it." And she commented that if she could provide documentation, would that suffice? And I said, "Well, it's definitely evidence." So she provided me the documentation of when their new pastor came, the pamphlet from the church when he was ordained, the moving company, when the moving company moved his personal effects and property into the house as a parsonage. I think there was a utility change. All this documentation, then, I said, "Now I can put a date on it." And the laws read that if it's sixteen days or more of the month that's occupied or used by an exempt entity, then that entire month. So there's a multitude of laws. With that, I was down there with, Vicky brought in Abby to discuss, and Abby said what she read in the laws, she recommended not approving the abatement. My office, I recommend approving the abatement, and I don't know if that's in the packet, but I provided in an email several laws that pertain, and there isn't a law explicitly to this situation. If the church bought it in July and used it as religious affiliation, they can apply for an abatement. They purchased it and it's used the months that it was used for that past acquisition. So that's kind of my foundation for recommendative approval, and that's in 10-4-19.1. It didn't transfer. They owned it, but there was a change in use midway through the year, which I was able to verify through documentation she provided. So that's my justification for that, why I would recommend it.
Questions?
Do you know why Vicky or Abby, or Abby or Terry decided not to think we should approve this?
You know, I don't really. I know Terry had looked at it too. Leann had said, I mean, there's several, several laws. 10-4-9 says property owned by religious society and excuse, and used exclusively for religious purposes exempt. Then there's, if it's a building used or a structure used to house any cleric, I mean, that's your parsonages, so that, it meets that. There's another one, 10-4-19, that says continuing tax exempt. If the use of the property changes, or if it transfers ownership from deed and entered into, then they have to reapply for exemption. Well, at the time when the exemptions are required, the applications, it was not used, so there was nothing to apply for. So...
Chris, did, did the state's attorney's office see the evidence that was presented?
They should have. Vicky had it all. I just happened to stumble into the conversation when I went over there, and Abby was looking at it with Vicky. So I, as I, as I indicated to Leann, it's no skin off my nose. My office is recommending. The state's attorney said, "No, they wouldn't recommend it." There is another one, though, that I would bring up, that 10-4-12. This deals with, I'll call it Touchdown Jesus, because I don't remember the name. If there's a percentage of the building is not used for religious, then that percentage is to be assessed and taxed, which we do. In this particular case, the entire property on November 1 was taxable because it was a rental, and midway through the year, it changed, the change in use. And it says, the 10-4-12 says, "The resulting value shall be multiplied by the percentage of time a property is used for other than religious purposes. The resulting value shall be assessed as a value of taxation." So in my opinion, with the combination, because there isn't a specific law, if they would have bought it and used it, from the day they bought it and used it, it's exempt. This one here says, it's partially taxed. Well, we partially taxed the, the months that it wasn't. So in my opinion, blending a couple of laws together, because they're nothing specific to this situation, that they provided enough information and documentation to me to say, "If you would have bought it this day," which we don't have a deed, but you provided me the stuff basically to suffice a deed. It's used from here forward, under that, under what you're qualified for, I said, "I would recommend it."
Steve, did you want to add something?
I, I did review the facts and the law, and I'm convinced that it qualifies for abatement.
And, and I did talk to Terry, and she said that Abby's opinion was based on not wanting to set a precedent for how we would handle this type of matter. I don't think it was anything necessarily statutorily. And when you look at 10-18-1.1, which says that if the Board of County Commissioners is satisfied beyond doubt that the assessment of real property described in an application for abatement or refund is invalid, inequitable, or unjust, the board, if application is filed no later than the first day of November of the fourth year, after which such taxes would have become delinquent, may abate or refund any part of, of there in excess. And, and I myself think it's inequitable to have the church pay that one thousand seventy-three dollars because they made a mistake, so...
I would just like to add as well, had they not provided any documentation, I mean, if I wouldn't have had a deal, then, you know, I mean, we have people come in and say, "Well, I tore that building down on the farm, and they realize it was torn down two years ago. If we haven't been on site, we don't know." There's no process. I would need to, I need to calculate estimated amount of taxes that would have been due or that they've already paid in order to do that. And with their documentation they provided, I feel confident in, from this date forward, it was, it was continued use as a parsonage.
Chris, a question for you.
Yeah.
You know, Abigail said, "Want to be consistent," and I guess I look at it, is there a difference between a homeowner coming in, not getting owner occupied status for the year, but then coming in and living in it halfway through the year, and then coming back and saying, "Hey, I want an abatement because I was non-owner occupied November 1, but I actually moved in January, so I want an abatement back that, for those taxes that I got charged." And my understanding is, is you can't. You're stuck with it for the whole year.
You are. There's a, there's a, it's similar, but it's, it's different laws. I mean, because we're dealing with an exempt class of property, for starters. Exempt is exempt. If the county...
So that's, that's the difference.
In my opinion, it is, and with the owner occupied, you had to own it by November 1. If you, if your deed said November 2, you're out. Now, in the instance of, they did own it, they never made application, and that's the purpose of why the owner occupied applications aren't due until March 15. It's so March 1, the assessment notice is required to be mailed by law. You've got two-week time period of when my office has to mail the assessment notice to go, "Whoa, I didn't, I'm not owner occupied." Once we get past the March 15, then there is no provisions. There's other laws, the elderly freeze, for instance. If they don't make application by November 1, there is a provision in the law that says, "Okay, even though there's a deadline, if you missed it, we can go back and abate it or credit it if the taxes aren't due yet." There's no provisions for owner occupied.
So do you think us making this decision will set a precedent for owner occupied to start coming in and do that?
That's up to your decision. All I can do is forward them to you. You make the decision yes or no. I wouldn't want to speak on your behalf.
Do you have any comments on that? I mean, you know, I, I just worry that, I mean, don't get me wrong. I'm not a big fan of the owner occupied, not having it by the first and having to sit there for a year and pay higher taxes and not be able to change it. To me, this would lead to somebody coming in and owner occupied and saying, "I moved here." I may be wrong on that, it's just... I think it's, I think it's a legitimate discussion, you know, to, to look at the equities of, of abatements. However, I, I think here we're kind of correcting a situation, and I would agree with Chris as to the exemption, in a sense, that's a, a unique class, I guess, of property, and we're more or less kind of correcting perhaps an, an error in classification.
I think also, if you could go back to the abatement form. And if you look on there, and I can't read it, if you zoom in there, there's specific reasons for an abatement. The property has been, you know, an error has been made in identifying, we called it something else other than what it was. The property is exempt from tax. The property, a loss occurred. I mean, there's specific reasons for an abatement. So this one falls under the exempt portion. You don't just get an abatement because you want to get your taxes back. There's, there's specific reasons, and if they don't fall within those reasons on the abatement application, then...
Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses and reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of two hundred dollars, line 101-4-211-4270, receipt number 406571, for reimbursement from Drug Control Fund for roadside interview concealment training.
Move approval.
Second.
Somebody want to explain what this is?
This is reimbursement that we received for some training that a sheriff, that a sheriff's deputy went to, and then the Drug Control Fund pays for a portion of that training. Am I correct?
Right. They paid for the registration and so forth. Normally, on a small amount, I don't put it back in, I just general fund it. I'm so tight on my training budget that I need every dollar I can get back, so the Attorney General paid for it, and I'm putting it back into my training budget.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to declare items as surplus and sell via online auction.
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to add to this?
I guess I had a question. At one time, I think it was mentioned, the tractor with the mowers going to the weed department helped Misty with roadside mowing and stuff. I don't know if that...
Larry, the answer to your question, I don't believe that we will utilize the tractor as much as I assumed we would. And we don't have a trailer to haul it from here to the northwest part of the county or the southeast part of the county. It would take quite a time just to drive it out there if we were needing to utilize the tractor in the right of ways. Being we wouldn't use it as much as I assumed, I didn't think it was worth transferring to us and holding on to it, is the reason.
Anything further? Call the rule.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Discussion and possible action to approve a quote from Safe and Secure for the installation of a monitored panic button system at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval.
Second.
And how does this panic button work, then?
These are the wireless panic buttons, similar to the small black buttons that each office here has. We have installed some, I believe. We're looking at installing some out at the highway shop, if those haven't already been, have those been installed yet? Not yet. We're looking at that. We've done some out at Community Health Office as well. And what those do is, if there is an incident that occurs, you can press that button, and it notifies, you know, through a monitoring system, then we'll notify dispatch to that specific location. We've been, we have them, you know, in this building. We have them pretty much in all of our buildings, or we're looking at getting them. I know we're looking at some at the highway shop as well. You can see that some of my chicken scratches are on the quote. That's because we, in, when we initially got the quote, they wanted a seventh button, so I just changed that cost. And then their software wasn't able to take off the sales tax, which we don't pay. So the $2,026.85 is the quote for installation of those seven panic, wireless panic buttons.
Is that seventh one going into archery range?
Yes, I believe so. There was one that that range was eliminated, wasn't included initially. So I think it was, you know, a couple of different offices. This does include 4H as well, the 4H office.
Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Discussion and possible action to approve a quote from Safe and Secure for the addition of lockdown buttons to the door access system at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval.
What this does is because Safe and Secure installed the door access system out there, similar to what we had in this building, there will, would be a couple of buttons installed out there that once pushed, it would lock down every door that's connected to the Safe and Secure system now that has the card swipe system on it. It would lock down the entire building. And it's the installation of a couple of those buttons.
Does lockdown mean that nobody can get in or out?
Lockdown, if you have your card, you could still get in and out. But in the event of, you know, something else going on out there, it would lock down all of the doors. And so somebody who doesn't have a key pass would not be able to access those doors by just opening them. And this is for, you know, typically, we think of it as, you know, your business hours if something were to occur out there.
Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to accept Commissioner Miller's resignation as a committee appointee to the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board.
I move.
Second.
By way of explanation, it's not that I'm running away from a difficult situation, although some of the situations are difficult out there. Commissioner Jensen expressed an interest in taking my place. And initially, when I was appointed, because he was chair at the time and had so many other obligations, he appointed me. And so, in the interests of letting him go ahead and be on this committee, I submitted my resignation. And I'll still help him however I can.
And we have to take a vote on that? We don't vote, do we? On an action to accept a resignation?
You do vote on appointments. At the beginning of the year, the first meeting of each year, the board does vote on that list of where you appoint yourselves to all of the various boards and whatnot. I guess that's why I had it on there for action to accept the resignation, and then action, you can see the next action would be to appoint someone else. And the BCOAC's Advisory Board bylaws do state that the commission shall appoint. So I guess it's maybe not necessary, but it, you know, just to kind of maybe keep things clean.
It's clean. Okay. Let's have a voice vote on the motion to accept the resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then, action to appoint a commissioner to the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board. And I think as chair, I get to appoint?
Again, the bylaws say that the commission shall appoint, so I think it needs to be a board decision.
Do we have a nomination, then?
I move that we nominate Commissioner Jensen.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And he opposed. Okay. And we're going to take a five-minute recess before we start Commission Department Director Report.
I'm tired. How am I going to drive to Pier?
I'm going to call us back to order, and the sheriff has an additional item he needs to address before we move on.
I was talking about the Aurora Corner. I forgot to mention that a few days before the accident, my investigator, one of my investigators is coming on the gravel road at the Aurora Corner, approaching the stop sign, extremely slippery there. He applied his brakes, started sliding, brought his car sideways, slid into Highway 14, and then got sideswiped by a semi. What saved him was, he went, started going in sideways. If he would have went, slid across, he probably wouldn't be here. But the estimate on the car is around $7,000, $8,000. That's not including the internal, or I mean, underneath and stuff. It's a car that was replaced from an accident that wasn't the deputy's fault. A couple of years ago, I bought that car just off a lot because it's an investigator's car, so I don't need all the bells and whistles of a patrol car. So depending on if they total it or not, what I'll do is I'll try to replace it by trying to find something either through South Dakota Surplus, or I think the car's only worth maybe $7,000 or $8,000. But I'll try to replace it with that amount. Again, it doesn't need all the bells and whistles of a patrol car. But what it is marked, I mean, it's, I do put siren in it, radials and that type of stuff, but it doesn't have to have the skid plates and all the fancy stuff. So I'll try to replace it with what it costs that we get from the insurance company. So it's going to take out of my, does that make sense? It take, the most that car's going to cost me is $1,000 out of my budget, plus then our insurance company will pick up the other. But I don't know what the cost of the, there is some damage to the semi also. It hit the wheel and so forth, so I don't know what that cost is for there. So, but I forgot to mention that, I apologize. We, he had a guardian angel that day, so. And then the other thing, I just, why I'm up here is, I have to thank Sean, and, because, you know, he didn't have to come up here and try to explain all this, but he was willing to do that. Because if I explained it, I'd be still trying to figure it out myself. But he saves the county money because a lot of times on my IT stuff, if it wasn't for having a county IT, I'd have to be calling the vendor, and they charge you, to talk to you, basically. So he does save my office money on my budget. So I do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commission Department Director Report.
You have been invited to the Brookings Fire Department's annual feed. That's coming up on Monday, March 26th. It starts at 6:00, and it's at the Fire Hall, the corner of 6th and 20th Avenue, 607 20th Avenue. 6:00. Let me bring up that. Here's the official flyer. So 6:00 social, and then 6:30 is the meal. I included the most recent SDACC legislative update with my report. A couple of things I handed out this morning. The county received two different notices of hearings upon application for a variance. They are in front of you this morning. Just notifying the county because both of the residences are within a couple of blocks of, near the courthouse and near this building. Probably more for it being near the courthouse. We also received a request from Chuck Cecil through the museum, the historical museum over in Volga. They were discussing some things with me on an issue, a separate issue, and they noticed that we had some old surveying equipment. The Highway Department had found some old surveying equipment that was used way back in the day. And if you've been up into the office, Michelle has it displayed on her back counter. And they saw that and were extremely interested in that stuff. And, you know, with it being displayed in our office, we just thought it was too neat not to have out. But I think it would get a lot more, a lot more, serve a better purpose if we donated that to the museum. So if you are interested in that, I believe we'll declare it as surplus at the next meeting. It hasn't been used. I don't, it's, from when, Dick, that stuff that was used back?
It's about as old as the other stuff we use. I don't... No, most of the time with the surveying stuff, we've got an electronic one now.
So, but yeah, it's, so if I can get a consensus from the board that will move forward in that direction, and they will, they will handle that. And then, let's see if there was anything else. I have two other things. The first, I'll probably bring Sean, put Sean back in the hot seat again. But as part of my report, we had discussed the ethernet connection between the city-county building and the sheriff's office. And there have been some issues with that connection being very, very slow, to the point where, you know, Zerker doesn't run well, InCode will not work. Things freeze up on occasion. So Sean started looking into it, visited with SwifTeL. They ran some tests, basically, to see kind of what our usage was. And during the day, between 8:00 and 5:00, from what we had to what we were using is probably double, almost double, right? Am I, we needed extra bandwidth, basically, to cover the amount of information that we were transferring back and forth between the two.
Well, we were experiencing, basically, during working hours, the line between the two offices was full. At night, overnight, weekends, it was fine. They didn't experience any slowdowns, but when the majority of people were working, majority of people using the network, the pipe between this building and the sheriff's office was completely full, which would result in applications becoming unresponsive. The big concerns were Zerker, which is what the law enforcement uses for doing all of their reports, storing some of their digital evidence, mostly the pictures and typed-out reports. And then InCode, which is responsible for all of our financial stuff, payroll, and those remaining fast enough to actually be productive during the day. I received a, basically, a readout of how much we're using on a day, a week, and then month by month. And there are very obvious spikes when people show up for the day, which is to be expected. But those spikes hit the top of what we have available. SwifTeL gave us a, well, they increased our bandwidth, they doubled that pipe. For a couple of weeks, I believe it's still set up that way because they were waiting to hear back from this meeting. And by doubling it, we gave some leeway. It doesn't fill up the entire pipe between the two buildings, and there is a little bit of room to grow still. You can think of it like a highway. You don't design the highway for 2:00 a.m. You design it for when it's going to be the busiest. Well, we were having a traffic jam.
And the cost, because that's where you folks probably care the most, is to double, I think that's where I got the double, double the bandwidth, it's going to be an extra $42.40 per month. So to double that, to give them the relief that they need, it does still allow us some room to grow as well over there. If you guys are in agreement that we should, it is that way, actually. They increased it now just to run some numbers to show us if that would indeed help the situation. And I think it has. I don't know if you've visited with the folks over there.
The person who noticed it the most is Kathy. She uses InCode and Zerker consistently throughout the day, and she noticed that it has been more apt to respond quickly to her. So she's able to do things, get things done without having to wait for the application to pick up where it left off.
Has that stopped the freeze-up problems?
Some of them, yeah. Most of them. Talking to her, it's only, well, last time I spoke to her, since we made the change, it's only frozen up once or twice, when she used to experience freezes several times a day.
That's totally frustrating and unacceptable. I think we have to do this.
And the $42 represents, oh, it's $42 of a bill that's already $1,000 plus a month. So it's...
Yeah, the bill right now is about $1,041, and it would go up to $1,083.41. So we're increasing it just over $40 a month.
And then you'll put that on as an action item for another time, or how will we proceed?
We don't need, if you give us consensus just to do it, we'll start, we'll do it now.
All right.
All right. I think we've got consensus.
Okay. And the last thing that I have to discuss is Governor Dugard, this year, gave eight hours of administrative leave to state employees on Monday, April 2nd, Easter Monday. We had it, and you know, we're in the process of reviewing that entire administrative leave policy anyway, but the policy states right now that we would give employees administrative leave for whatever the governor declares for administrative leave on Good Friday. In all of my history with the county, for 15 years, he has never, or the governor has never given any time on Good Mon, or on Easter Monday. It's always been either typically, even a half-day on Good Friday is what it's typically been. Last year was a full day. But the policy for us actually came into effect after Easter last year, so we've, we've never, our county employees have never had any admin leave given on a Good Friday, because the policy, that Good Friday was written into the policy after Easter last year. So I've been asked how it's going to be handled this year, if there's, if the board is interested in giving administrative leave on Easter Monday. And I've had some discussions with some of you about how that policy needs to look moving forward. I think what I'm going to do is bring several policy manual changes to you at the next meeting, next Tuesday on the 20th, but I think because, I wanted to bring this up now, because Easter is just a couple of weeks away, so if there is something so that employees can plan, so, that if there was something that you wanted to do, didn't want to do, I can let them know that, so.
And we have administrative leave on Good Friday, right?
In the policy manual, it states that we will give administrative leave following what the state does on Good Friday. However, the state this year didn't give anything for Good Friday. He opted to give eight hours of administrative leave on Easter Monday. And, you know, and probably, well, Vicky's not here, but there's, there's some offices that depend a little bit more, are more connected to the state offices. Vicky's not here to speak to that. The one office where it gets a little bit confusing as to how to handle this is Community Health, because we do have a full-time office assistant down there, or office manager down there. And so when the state offices close on Monday, because she's a county employee, she has to use, instead of getting admin leave, she would have to use eight hours of vacation. There's really not much she can do down there when the office is open, but the nurses aren't there, because they're off, because they have administrative leave, because they're state employees. So that's, that's the one position that, you know, is, is probably affected the most, that position specifically, when there's differences between what the county does and what the state does. So I'm looking for some direction on what to tell folks if there's nothing this year, because Good Friday was, is in the policy, and it wasn't Good Friday that was given. Let me know that, I can share that, or if you would rather do something on Good Friday still, even though the state is not. It's up to you, I guess I'm deferring to you.
Was our policy a full day on Good Friday?
It was whatever the state granted.
Okay.
So whether it was a full day or a half-day.
Years ago, there was a half a day. Took that.
What's going on on the other side of the building on Friday and Monday?
They're open.
Both days?
Yes. The city only, the city doesn't do administrative leave. They just have the 10 typical holidays that the, that the county also has.
I'm not a big fan of the Monday.
I'm not either.
Would you say the city's doing?
The city's open. They don't grant administrative leave for anything.
I think, I guess I, I would be in favor of giving our employees a half-day on Good Friday, but not the administrative leave day on Monday.
Don't all speak at once.
I guess I'd agree with that.
I don't know, it seems like this administrative leave is getting out of control, if you ask me. I guess it's, I can understand, you know, the Thanksgiving one, you know, and stuff like that, but now to start adding them on different places.
And we, we had, you know, the, the state granted administrative leave last year, if you recall, the 4th of July landed on a Tuesday, and the governor gave Monday. I didn't, I don't even, I don't think I brought that to your attention, because it's not, that wasn't a day that was written in our, into our policy. And the only reason I'm bringing this to you now is because there was part of Easter that was written into our policy. It's Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and that's it. Anything above and beyond that, I, you know, unless it's in the, in the policy specifically for those holidays, I.
I guess I'd like to have you look back at when they established that floating holiday. What was the intentions of the floating holiday? I don't know if it was the day after Thanksgiving, or if it was for this Good Friday deal.
I don't know that it was given for any specific reason, because you can't expect everybody to use their floating holiday on the same day, because your, then your offices would be closed, so.
But it was offered for a reason.
It was, yeah, and it was even before my time, so I'm not sure.
But I think it was, part of it was the Good Friday deal, when they quit doing the Good Friday half-day. But I'm, I mean, that was a long time ago.
That was a long time ago, because I've never gotten anything for Good Friday.
No, I remember getting half-days.
But last year, when I looked at it, when I brought it to you, to your attention last year, was because count, I'd say, most counties, 90% plus of counties across the state do exactly what the state does, no matter what holiday it is. So when he gave July 3rd last year, most counties across the state were closed that day as well. It's written into their policy that they do whatever the state does, no matter what.
And I think that might be directly related to most counties being in the courthouse with all those state offices. There's, there's a difference, I think. But did I hear somewhat of a consensus from Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Miller, that?
Half a day.
Half a day on Friday? And Commissioner Krogman says no? And I'm okay with half a day on Friday, so.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, half a day on Friday?
So closing at noon on Friday.
Closing at noon on Friday.
But nothing on Monday.
Right.
So just to give some direction to our employee down at Community Health, she would have to use vacation on Monday, otherwise she can be there and, and the doors maybe don't necessarily need to be open, because if she can't do business without the community health nurses there, but she'd still have to report to work, or there's their business that can be, I don't know, it's a state office. I guess I could defer to them, whether or not they want to have the doors open or not.
Right, and, and I'm, I can't imagine an office where, if you had a day where you could get caught up on things, you couldn't find things to do.
Exactly, I agree. I, I am thinking she can find something.
So that's from noon, so from at, closing at noon on Good Friday.
So now she gets to leave on Good Friday, right?
Yes. Well, but that's the other caveat, too. I mean, the state folks will still be there. She wouldn't, you know, she would get administrative leave.
Is, is there any reason that, for that position, we can't say that she would be authorized if she so chooses to use her Friday on Monday, and then use, if she wants the whole day, to take four hours leave time?
I believe so, yeah. She could utilize that four hours of administrative leave rather than on Good Friday. She could use four hours of administrative leave plus additional leave accrual on the Monday, Easter Monday, if she so chooses.
Okay, that's fine.
Stacy, what happened with the chamber meeting tickets? Did you get replies back?
I only heard back from Commissioner Bartley on that, and he said he would, and I, the RSVP deadline was Friday, so I did issue him one of those.
And unless one of them, one of you all are taking that, I, I would take that. I'm, I'm going to go, I've already RSVP'd, because I'm on the BEDC stuff, but I would take the ticket, but if somebody else wanted it.
You know, I think this may be a good policy moving forward, that we offer to the Chair and the Vice Chair, then there's not any, you know, any question as to who, and then if they, they don't plan to attend, or want to defer that onto somebody else, then we can decide.
Right, I, I agree with that.
And I can, I can see about changing yours to use our second ticket.
Okay, but I, I have RSVP'd, so as part of the BEDC board stuff that's going on that day, so. Okay, anything else from you, Stacy?
Just to review some of the upcoming dates that we have. Some of us are, Commissioner Miller and I are leaving today for the workshop in PEAR, and the rest of you will, most I think, will be joining us tomorrow out there for that. The annual meeting is Thursday, March 15th, the Chamber BEDC and Convention Visitors Bureau. It's on Thursday. There is a United Way nonprofit meeting that starts at 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, the 20th. It's in the lower level of the main branch of First Bank and Trust. Next Wednesday is when we host Sioux Valley Commissioners Quarterly Meeting. Again, that starts out at noon, the meeting does, out at the Outdoor Adventure Center. I'll be working with Robert and some others to get that set up, but we have had quite a large RSVP, between 85, I'm expecting between 85 and 90 people to come to this meeting this time, which is a good-sized crowd for this meeting.
We're doing this in the archery range, then?
I think we need to do this in the archery range, probably. We can look at the space, but.
Yeah, I think so.
So I'll have that discussion with Robert when I get back from PEAR. And then, as I mentioned, the volunteer feed, the Brookings County Fire Department's annual feed, not volunteer, volunteer firefighters, 6:00 p.m. starting on Monday, March 26th. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
State's attorneys report? Commissioned reports, Mr. Jensen?
I'd like to go back. Our Highway Superintendent requests some direction on a couple other projects. The project over at Elkton, I think it'd be beneficial just to talk to John Ritterhouse, and when the state moves forward with that project, I'm sure they'll be designing that intersection to serve both the county and the state best interest. But, you know, I don't think, I think that'd be the time, you know.
Yeah, because they're, it's, if everything moved the way the state usually does, it'll be 2024, 2025, somewhere's in there, they'd do it.
Right.
So, I guess what I explained to the mayor was that it's not really us to decide what the state will do.
Right. The other matter you talked about was the road in Volga. I guess traditionally, as the highways go through these smaller towns, we've usually maintained the driving surface. Hasn't been a total replacement like it is in Volga. There was one in Aurora, but the county received 100% grant through that. But I guess in my opinion, we work with, work with them on the driving surface, not sidewalks, or curb and gutter, or anything like that, but you're going to have to come up with a price, too. I think we should be involved with their project over there.
I think, I think Jameson's biggest concern was, he wanted to make sure that what they come up with for a project, that the county would still entertain being a participant in that. And I guess one thing that I suggested to him was that if we participate in any way, shape, or form, would you consider taking that road over? Give them kind of a, a little bit of a leverage, and so if we were going to pay or what they were thinking, basically, that would relieve us then after that.
But we need to.
Unless you guys want to keep the road and put up with a pond right in the middle of it, I mean, that's no problem either, but I wouldn't suggest that. I would say if they've got such a, kind of a unique approach in what they want to accomplish through this project, I think it'd be a very good opportunity to eliminate that road off our system and, and help them out, and everybody will be a lot better because of it.
But I think we're a little ways away from that, because I think we need, we need to know, have an idea on cost, and then we need to budget accordingly.
Correct, but I'd hate to lose our control over the road either. You know, we do do our load limits on there, and, you know, other aspects, the snow removal and stuff. You know, if we're involved, Dick can be involved with the design criteria, too. I mean, that's part of it, with being involved, if, you know. So I think just stay abroad of it and inform us. But I hate to wash our hands of it, you know, it is, it is our road, so. On other matters, on the 7th, I attended a Conservation District meeting briefly. I sat in on that. And then on the 12th, went to Towns and Township meeting, and that's all I have.
On the 22nd, we had an executive session. February 27th, we met with our architect. On March 1st, we had an advisory board meeting, they're getting a little bit shorter. We're making progress. On March 3rd, I attended the Legislative Forum, to hear what our legislators are doing. On March 7th, I attended the Extension Board meeting, and we've already talked about Sonya going into the colonies, which I think is just great. Also at that Extension Board meeting, she's got summer interns hired. 4H is partnering, partnering with FFA in April on Feeding South Dakota, and they'll be packaging, well, their goal is 50,000 meals, and they'll be doing that at BCOAC. And I think that is just wonderful, and I knew you would like that. Sonya's going to go ahead and order signage for the south window. The Advisory Board approved that for her, that says 4H and Extension is there. We're working on, we might have a storage trailer, and, and we're not, if, if it's not donated to us, they'll give us a heck of a deal. This will be to hold our Achievement Day stuff, our display cases and stuff, and we will own it, and it will be stored where we're trying to get the heck of a deal. And they will also have a semi haul, a truck, a tractor haul it for us. So this, that's really good news, because we were looking into purchasing a trailer to do that, because right now, all of our stuff, we're renting from Perkins, a semi that's holding it all. She already told us Special Foods would be in Volga, and that's it for that. March 8th, I went to the Council and School Board Forum, and then March 12th was the Towns and Townships and Weed Board Annual Meeting, and most of us were there. That's all I have.
All right, 22nd, we had the executive session. 26th, I had the Brookings Health Meeting, and also the Brookings Health System Investment Authority. So they had a discussion with their group that they hired to invest the money. They authorized the transfer of funds to start that investment authority going, so that'll be good for them. And then on the 27th, I spoke at Rotary there for portable housing and different stuff. And then I had executive session on the 27th. I had a beta meeting on March 1st, and the BCOAC meeting, Advisory Board that night, and we're, we're getting stuff done, which is good. And then the Townships meeting and Weed Board meeting on the 12th.
And then the Townships Meeting and Weed Board Meeting on the 12th yesterday, so. But I had...
Thank you. On the 21st, I met, I went to the BEDC meeting, and we focused on the city's comp plan and looked specifically at what's going on in the northeastern portion on the east side of the interstate as relates to industrial and commercial uses. The group voted on some recommendations to changes to the city comp plan. Those were submitted in letter form. Last night was the, the City Planning and Zoning Board's first view of that comp plan. Those changes have been incorporated, so that was, that was very helpful. Tended the, our special executive sessions on the 22nd and the 27th. On the 28th, we had a joint jurisdiction meeting, and we have now worked through most of the Ag District uses, coming up with a list of what we think should be permitted uses in the Ag District in the joint jurisdiction area. And so we're still working through that. On February 2nd, which was a Friday, Commissioner Bartley and I left to go to NACO, where Mr. Hill was already halfway there when, when we left. We got to Minneapolis about 1:00 in the afternoon. About 3:00, they told us our flight to Washington, D.C. was canceled because of the weather. Now, this was Friday afternoon. They would be able to get us on a flight to Washington about 6:30 Sunday night, and we said we'd like to go back to Sioux Falls. So we waited, along with the county commissioners from Minnehaha County, and finally, we were put on a flight at 10:30 Friday night that got us back to Sioux Falls. None of our luggage came back, but, but we got that worked out during the course of the weekend. But in other words, Commissioner Bartley and I did not make it to the NACO conference, and I attended the Towns and Township Meeting yesterday with the rest of you. That would be my report. Would we have a motion to adjourn?
移到
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.